Or it turns up.
Yeah, it comes first.
Well, seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting at order. Um, additions to the agenda, um, Kim had said that he'd sent, they had sent notes nine point two, so everybody should have got that if they would have opened it late today, or later today. Um, so it's on the agenda, so any other additions to the agenda? Hearing none, somebody wish to move this?
Some, Nick.
George Lee. Any question on George Lee's motion? I'll call a question. It's coming, I think.
Just yours.
Did you abstain?
No, I didn't. Mine did come out.
I can do it for you.
Okay, oh, yeah, it's carried in and out of sleigh. Okay, uh, moving on from that to the regular council meetings minutes of, uh, August the eighth. Any questions on August twelve, sorry, apologies, August twelve, I'm sorry. Any question on any of the?
I'm hard pressed to remember that far back.
Yeah. Okay. Paul moves. Okay, any question on Paul's motion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. Still waiting for two more.
I've got six four and it says defeated.
Oh, I've got all seven already finished and I got.
Five four and zero zero.
Zero against, yeah.
Yeah.
I got six four and then it says defeated there instead of carried.
Yeah, it said defeated on mine too, but it's five four.
Anyway, it's carried.
We can have Karen call.
Yeah, it's me, so. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, the public hearing. And so I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the room to speak on bylaw number fourteen eighty-four dash nineteen? Inter municipal development plan with whole family. Joint notice of separate public hearings. Okay, hearing none, we will leave it open for five minutes and. Go from there.
I work with the Old Man River Regional Services Commission, working with your staff and Municipal Planning Commission for about, I don't know, the last four or five months. But prior to this, we began this process with the county to undertake the adoption of the inter municipal development plan. About, oh, I guess maybe eighteen months ago. Now, this is a statutory plan. It sits atop the sort of the hierarchy of plans, the municipal planning documents in part seventeen Municipal Government Act. It's something that we have to do now. Prior to the modernized Municipal Government Act, it was an optional piece of legislation, but now every municipality in the province has to adopt one with their neighbor. So that was the impetus for, uh, beginning this exercise. Uh, I trust that most of you, most of you are fairly familiar with this document. Maybe I'll just highlight the, the few sort of changes that happened after you first saw this thing, I think it was in the spring where you gave the first reading. And, and as you know, there was a lot of discussion about, um, this notion of, uh, wind energy exclusion in the plan area. Uh, and working with the IMDP committee, they, they decided that we needed more information. And, and we went to a consultant to procure some, um, some airport related drawings, giving us, um, giving us the, the, the knowledge we kind of needed to, uh, make some decisions about whether or not we would try to pursue this notion of wind energy, um, regulation, which is a bit tricky because the, the province ultimately regulates these matters. The Alberta Utilities Commission, uh, deals with utility scale developments. Municipalities have influence and can be stakeholders in the, in the process, but when it comes down to it, it is the Alberta Utilities Commission who makes decisions on the matter. So you, you've probably seen the report, but what WSP, the consultant that we hired, uh, did was, uh, prepare the maps according to Transport Canada Guidelines. Ultimately, it's a, it's a four kilometer buffer zone around both the, the Vulcan Airport and the Kirkcaldy Aero Dome, within which it's very unlikely that the Utilities Commission would approve a, a utility scale, um, tower. Um, so instead of proposing to exclude the whole plan area for potential wind energy development, uh, what the committee chose to recommend was to scale it back to just the, the urban fringe, which is the, about a mile, mile and a half buffer around the town's corporate limits, and this four kilometer radius. So there is some potential for, for future winds, wind energy development in the plan area, although from what we've been told, it's unlikely that, uh, something like that would be viable. So that, that's where, uh, the proposal, the draft plan sits with respect to this matter. And again, that was kind of the biggest change from when you first saw this document back in the spring, gave it first reading. I'm not sure if it's necessary to highlight too much else. The plan does speak to things like future land use and annexation, highlighting short and long term potential annexation areas, uh, transportation corridors, stuff like that, all the typical things that we usually see in a, in a IMDP. Yeah, I wonder if there's any questions or, or we leave that up for after the public hearing?
Yeah, sure.
Speaking about it on the agenda today.
Yeah.
Everybody, it's, it's attached to the agenda as well, so everybody's had a chance to read it hopefully two or three times since the first reading.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
That was easy. You're close to your five if you're inclined.
Okay. Well, I will, since nobody is here to speak on behalf or opposed or against the, uh.
We didn't receive anything in writing either.
Okay, and nothing in writing, so.
You can close then.
Okay, it's, it's immediate though, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, sorry. Ryan was talking, I decided we'd record him.
Oh, okay, okay.
He started playing, we can't afford that.
No, well, okay, I just wasn't sure whether to tell you or not. So anyway, so, um, being that there's nobody here to speak for or against it, I will close the, uh, public, uh, meeting and, uh, declare this one closed and it will come up later in the John and the Gem. Okay, moving on to delegation of presentations. So we have two presentations to our staff members and so. Wanda, you're the very first lucky recipient, so we need to come up over here. So those of you that don't know Wanda, which I'm sure is not too many people in the county of Vulcan that doesn't know Wanda. But, uh, anyway, Wanda was, uh, good enough to start with us on May first of two thousand and fourteen at front desk. Um, we've gone through some, uh, major administrational changes and, and events that went on in two thousand and fourteen and she hung in with us. And, uh, and now she has, works three quarter time and we're, Kim was saying that he's trying to convince her to work full time. I'm not sure why not, but him. But anyway, uh, so she's been with us for five years, so we have a, a certificate for Wanda for being with us for five years. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that, thank you very much.
And we both read the other one.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
You asked me to do a job.
Oh, yeah.
For those that don't know, Wanda makes the certificates, so it was hard to get her to, to her to make her own, but she did make a joke, wanted to make sure Tom and I actually read.
Yeah, before we signed it.
Before we signed it.
Signed it.
She protects us from con.
Yeah, so, thank you, Wanda. Anyway, um, and again, the next person is Nancy, who has been with us for fifteen years. Um, Nancy, again, has, uh, started off in different roles. Um, started off as an administrative secretary, which is what Karen's position is, and then moved to utility clerk. And then she didn't have enough in her job description under utility clerk, and she took on the development officer slash utility clerk. So she does both of those. And then, uh, Kim was just saying that she's currently taking emergency managing training, not back in your, in your, uh, report, it says that you're taking some, some of that stuff, so. Anyway, so if we, for some unfortunate circumstances, need to open an ELC, Nancy has that ability to have a leg up on. She has, she has a leg up on us, so she knows what should be done or could be done or the way we're supposed to do it, so. But anyway, again, you know, we're very fortunate in our community, we've had some long term staff members that have stayed with us, but. Anyway, Nancy's been with us for fifteen years and so there's your certificate. Thank you very much, Nancy. Really appreciate all you've done for us and putting up with, uh, all the councils for the last fifteen years. I guess it'd be probably four councils, I guess, and three administrators, probably. Maybe four, maybe three at least.
Three.
Two administrators, so, uh, thank you very much again. Really appreciate your support and loyalty to us as a, as a community.
Thank you.
She's actually gonna stay for the rest of the meeting too.
Yeah, that's right.
That's one of the first people that have done that other than Karen and I.
Yeah, well, some, some like to stay, but they don't, I'm sure. Anyway, great, thank you very much for, again, to our staff for putting up with us and, and staying with us and participating in that, so. Okay, so that will move on to the correspondence, a letter from, um, municipal affairs on the MSI and the gas tax. So as you see, it's still there for this year. At Mayor's and Reeves, there was a question asked of the MLAs, whether they think it's gonna stay or not. And of course, we don't know what the, is gonna happen this year. The, the gas tax is federal, but it's administered municipal, uh, through the province. So that's why you see them both on the same page there, so. And it's kind of funny because there is, this year we got more for the gas tax and it was because it was an election year, they said.
And the federal.
And on the federal side, so.
So is this basically what we expected?
Yes.
No more?
No, definitely no more. Uh, the, uh, federal gas tax being dealt was, uh, was a nice thing, but again, that they announced that federally at the beginning of the year, so, so we were aware that it was gonna help make the decision for some streetlights.
Okay, so any questions on that one? Okay, if not, we'll move on to South Grove. Um, again, there's their monthly report, uh, it came to Mayor's and Reeves and South Grove is always active there, uh. So any questions on, of course, the, the report that was put out by the province is probably the line light of everything for everybody that is out there, whether every department is, is trying to, uh, interpret what's gonna happen and potentially gonna happen, so. Any questions on either one of those two documents? If not, somebody wish to file the correspondence? Uh, Laura? I saw Paul's hand up to, Laura was about that one. Any question on Laura's?
Maybe first.
Laura's motion? Okay, hearing that, I'll call the question. And it's carried in and out of sleigh. Okay, A, moving on to the, um, financial reports. So the cash statement is our first one. Enjoy the first, any comments or questions or?
Are we happy that we got some taxes?
Yes, yes, being that this is the July thirty first one, uh, we, your next meeting, you'll see the August. But, uh, yeah, this was the end of collection of taxes. You'll see from the next report, we just have a little bit outstanding. We're in relatively good shape until we start making capital purchases.
I would move that to be filed as information.
Okay, Laura moves to file. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. And that's carried in and out of sleigh. Okay, moving on to the financial, the year-to-date summary.
I had nothing to do with it, but it's just where we're supposed to be.
Yeah, uh, in general revenue, you'll see as of July, uh, we still have two hundred thousand, most of that is gonna be tips. Uh, and then the other one that's worth mentioning on this report is in, uh, sorry, it'd be under subdivision. And there's the added revenue of about thirteen thousand, that was a sale of those lots in the industrial subdivision, so those are the only ones that are, that, uh, really stand out as.
There are a couple that are fairly, um, like on expenditures, fairly close considering that this is, you know, uh.
Seven, seven months in.
Seven months in, I know that, you know.
Things like the pool in the arena fluctuate, uh, beginning and end of year, so.
Yeah.
Uh, a lot of the streets, uh, program stuff, it gets taken care of in May and June.
I'd say one question on economic development.
Yes.
Are we have, uh, budget of thirty-five thousand, but we spent fourteen hundred, is this?
Yes, so economic, economic development has, uh, the funding in there for some of the stuff that we do for, uh, the home and garden show, plus we, uh, have some money for the float that's gonna come out of there.
Oh, floats in there too?
Yeah, that was.
I thought maybe it was too strictly.
No, it was.
Under tourism or?
No, uh, we, we put funding away for our visits to, uh, the new businesses as well, uh, some of those things, we, we're asking to do that in there.
Okay, Paul?
Uh, just for, I guess maybe my personal information, uh, for cemetery.
Yes.
Revenue year-to-date is already above our budget.
Yes.
But our ex, expenses are, are lower too, like, how do we get numbers for, or can you refresh my memory on how?
Re- revenue, revenue is based solely on the amount of, uh, of sales plots, so, and the expenditures are costs of, uh, vaxel working out there. So if the sale of the, of the plots are, uh, columbariums, cremations, things like that, uh, they have, uh, quite a bit lower costs for expenses as opposed to what we bring in from the sale of them, so. So we've had more sales, I guess, it's, it's awful to talk about it that way for our cemetery, but, uh, yeah, we've had, we've sold more lots this year than, than we were anticipating.
But with the expenses not being as high, that's?
Uh, due to what, what's going on, we're not actually taking the backhoe or whatever and everything out there to, uh, to dig where, uh, where a cremation doesn't take the, the manpower or the expenses.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I do like the sign that says where the cemetery is coming in and out.
Good, thank that lady status sitting over there. Want to receive for information?
Yes. Okay, Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing that, I'll call the question. And it's carried in and out of sleigh. Okay, moving on to bylaws. So bylaw fourteen eighty dash nineteen, emergency, regional emergency management bylaw. So this one here, we, this is the one that we thought we had.
Yeah, so what, what we did is we, uh, gave first reading and then we sent it to the minister, uh, seeking their approval on it. And they sent it back saying that they can do all, we, all of the municipalities can do all three readings and then the minister will, uh, will approve it at that point. So they sent it back, the county redistributed it to all of us, we can do our second and third readings on it. Nothing has changed in the document other than sending it to the minister, so if council is happy with it, you can do second and third reading. Uh, my recommendation, as always, when we do second and third, just says second, but, uh, we have the motion ready for third, if you would like to go ahead and file this.
Laura?
I'd like to make the motion, proceed to second reading.
Okay, so Laura moves second. Okay, any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that, I'll call the question. And that was carried in and out of sleigh. Okay, um, does somebody wish to move the third?
I was gonna.
Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that, I'll call the question. Um, that's my problem, maybe I don't have to scroll it down. Sorry, I was waiting for mine, but anyway, um, it's carried in and out of sleigh. Okay, moving on to, uh, bylaw fourteen eighty-four dash nineteen, inter municipal development plan. So we have gentlemen here and Nancy, if anybody wishes to speak on, on it more than what you've already heard, but. Any questions for Karen?
So Ryan did have a, a talking with, uh, yeah, this is the same one we've sent, we've done first reading. Now, if we've done the public hearing, we can do second and third, but, uh, Ryan had mentioned to me earlier, we said about the same, your recommendation was to do second. We do have the motion ready for third, but Ryan did want to talk to council a little bit about doing third reading, if you want, Ryan.
Sure, yes, thanks. Um, and I also work with the county and, and the way we've scheduled this and the way we usually treat these IMDPs is that sometimes we'll recommend, you know, in a situation where we know it's absolutely unlikely that any changes will be proposed by the other municipality, where you aren't holding a joint hearing, that, that you can pass it tonight. Um, but what I might, uh, recommend that you consider doing is perhaps giving second reading tonight, but holding off on third. And that's just in the event that if something comes up at the county public hearing, which is on September eighteenth, and they wanna make a minor change, we have to adopt the same document and, and that would require you guys starting over with the bylaw process and having a whole another hearing. So although it does stretch things out a little bit, that's a conservative, uh, way to do things procedurally. That, that's all I note. I did, I have been dealing with the county, as I said, on this and, and I think they were pretty confident with the draft in front of them that they saw back in August. So I don't anticipate that there'd be changes, but again, we, we can't know what might come out of the public hearing, so if you choose to do so.
Good point, yeah.
Only delays in a couple of weeks anyway. And, and with that, they have their meeting on the eighteenth, so, uh, having said that, we have one on the twenty-third, so the next Monday, so if they did both readings, then.
Yeah, that, that's what I would say. If they, if they are okay with the document and, and they'll pass it on the eighteenth, and then you just come back for the final sort of symbolic third reading.
So any other questions for, for any of this at all?
So you were saying there is, uh, I was gonna ask if anyone else has brought up any issues or noticed anything through there that they might want to change, but their case seemed to be okay with it, but there's, nothing's been brought up?
I mean, back, back months ago when we were jostling with the, the wind energy stuff, the county council seemed a little divided on some of that. But I think since we, we, the committee's proposed the changes that are in the current final draft, county council seems, uh, to be supportive of what's in there now. So I don't think, I don't think there'll be any suggestions for further changes. They did, they did have a few minor changes back in August that we already incorporated. So unless it was, someone didn't read it back in August and now feels like they won't suggest a change, that would be the only thing, apart from someone, an individual uh, from the public brings something up to the public hearing. But persons that, it, I mean, is someone, a savvy individual would come to both public hearings if they really wanted a change made. But that's not to say we might not get some, just the county hearing.
Yeah, I, I think when we had that joint, uh, open house, I think it was, it was very positive anyway from that, that standpoint. I don't think there was a ton of, um, negative comments made on, on the plan, so. Like you said, I, I can't see somebody, um, coming back. But your, your point of moving it, the second reading tonight, it's not really gonna change much anyway in timing and, you know, the plan itself isn't gonna change much in that period of time or so. So is there any other questions or comments? Okay, is someone willing to make the?
I'll move second reading.
Okay, Paul moves second reading. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing that, I'll call the question. Okay, so that's carried in and out of sleigh. Okay, is that agreeable that we'll leave the third motion until the next meeting? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to, uh, current business. Uh, Old Man River Regional Services Commission Executive Minutes.
Oh, current business.
No, I'm not. Well, current, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize, sorry, sorry.
We didn't invite ours, other than Ryan for his stuff.
Yeah. Okay, um.
I can, I can speak to this. Uh, so we had a request, uh, that I sent out to all of council, you've had a chance to review my report and we did, uh, the email so that we could actually do this in a timely fashion, so, uh, it went out, the, the request is from the county to, uh, ask for servicing on to town infrastructure, and of course, that county infrastructure is, uh, the regional water line that runs within municipal boundaries. So for that, we needed permission from the Water Commission, so it was sent to the Water Commission, they have an email, uh, meeting, which I've attached all of that uh, for council's review, and it was approved. So if council would like to go ahead and, uh, approve this, then, uh, go forward with it.
George Lee, Kim, Kathy and myself had a meeting on this prior to the email vote. And all the questions were answered, there was no issues.
Falls well within the MOU and of course, with the background that was provided with the county, that's something that we're also, uh, working toward in our IMDP is being able to do that servicing and this will be a first step, as, as the report says, this will be the first, uh, step to, uh, getting these agreements in place for some of the, uh, places where water is leaving the town and into the county. We've been really fortunate so far that, uh, you know, we haven't run into problems with billing or anything, but, uh, there is the potential for that. And by doing these agreements and getting them in place properly, it'll, it'll allow us to supply the county with water and then they can supply their rate payers.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, George Lee moves, that we entered this agreement. Any question on George Lee's motion?
It's not really on the motion, but the other, well, I think there is only one other house on that road out towards back there right now.
Right. Right on.
Right on.
Yeah, so if they make a request, they are in the county, so they'll have to make the request in the county and then the county will.
Well, the farther the one, farther south one is, the other one that's closer is on, in the town.
Yeah.
Oh, I was thinking.
On McKay's?
Yeah.
Yeah, McKay's.
They're, they're on town and they, they were done through the LOU because they're within the municipal boundaries of the town. And if future development happens on the east side of the road, that they'll be included within the town LOU, so the county won't be involved. so the county won't be involved.
But the one that's farther south, um, are they, they're downstream from the, from the, uh?
At the top of the hill.
Are they on, yeah.
They're up well, but then they're in the county.
No, I know, but are they, are they downstream?
They're down at the air gap.
From the air gap?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so theoretically.
They could ask and then it would go through the similar procedure.
But it wouldn't go through us, it would go through, just to be.
Through the county and the county would ask us.
So that's one that's.
That's a trailer.
East?
Not farther south.
Okay, is the one east that's right along with the fifteen or sixteen?
Yeah, yeah, south and east of the part with Quonset?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in the county.
That's in the county, are they on water or?
Well.
They're wells.
Okay.
This allows us to.
Start that.
To allow for the conversations to let that happen.
Okay, any question on this, Paul? And that's George Lee's motion. Okay, hearing no more comments or questions, I'll call a question. And that's Carrie DeNance speaking. Okay, moving on to nine two, which again, like I said earlier, it was added to our agenda.
Or you can see the little work up, the mark on the side, we put the little.
It's huge.
Yeah, they, they were pretty proud of that at ICOMAS when they put that in there, so.
Okay, so it's quite straightforward, um.
Every year, council has to set a tax recovery, uh, auction date and then the rules to how the auction will be. That's according to the MGA and your policy for tax recovery. Most years, everybody pays before the end or, uh, but, you know, as you, as those of you know, last year, we ended up kind of selling problems, so.
Do we have a couple that potentially could be on?
We, we have some on the list currently, so that's why we're making sure it's at the need. We're a little bit later than, uh, past years, but that has to do with our timing and the exact difficulty. So we usually try to hold our auction in October, sorry, in October, but we're going to have it November this year.
Okay, any thoughts or questions? Lyle?
You, you'd mentioned that it goes in the Gazette?
Yeah, that's a legal requirement from the MGA.
Oh, okay.
So, and they, they require a lot of notice for their two weeks of, uh, of advertising, so. We, we have to do, we generally try to do the, uh, the motion in August and because of our canceling the end of August meeting, we pushed it to now, so.
Okay, uh, somebody wished to separate, Lyle?
Motion.
Okay, any question on Lyle's motion? Right now, I'll call a question. And that's Carrie DeNance speaking. Okay, now on to the community reports. And we have the Old Man River Regional Services Commission report there. Executive Committee meeting, any questions? Okay, moving on to the ORSC's annual general board meeting, which Lyle highlighted at one of our meetings. Any questions? On that one? Okay, hearing that, now I'll move on to Shunakarch.
Are they still in the same place when they did all these renovations?
I believe so.
I think so. Let me explore it. Is Shunakarch in the same, they did the renovations to what they had already?
As far as I know, I've never actually been down there.
Oh, okay.
Someone just came up from a meeting from the, Penny, I'll ask her.
No, I was just curious, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Shunakarch board? Okay, and we're on to the golf club. Any question for, again, Paul's kind enough to always bring us up to speed with what goes on and get stuff in quick, so. Okay, no questions on any of those? Somebody wish to file the council, the community reports? Paul? Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. And that's Claire unanimously. Okay, we'll go around the room to Mr. Taylor.
Okay, we had a golf course meeting, all right, an NBC meeting, which I can write, Lyle'll speak to it if he cares to. We had that impromptu Water Commission meeting with Kim. I was flying a wall, a Seawall meeting here, at the pool party, and closing. And then on town business, I went drinking with Hutter Rice.
Awesome.
Because I was going to give him a How to Write phone book. Well, there is other reasons I went there.
Okay, is it? Okay, any question for Paul?
So how did we get involved?
We probably have lots of questions, but maybe not a good fit for the meeting.
Well, if you like, I'll take you.
I don't like beer, but that's okay.
I was a strawberry kefir.
Oh, that could be done. Don't worry about that either.
Okay, move on to Ms. Bolt.
I was also at the pool, closing, um, the meeting with the Water Commission, and I had a record meeting. Um, we looked at some photos of Virginia Mitchell Memorial Park. There was like three phases that they want to go through. So we were all given coffee soda and just asked to try to give it a lot of thought and everything and take it back to the next meeting and what we want to see, what we don't want to see and stuff like that, so. It was quite interesting. Uh, we looked over the budget and again, we were asked to spend a little bit of time in the budget going over everything before the next meeting. Um, there was a couple of questions about the pool. I couldn't answer them, but, uh, the one question was, um, somebody wanted to know if we didn't get any grants through or just got real minimum, minimum grants for the pool, would the town pick up the price tag for the pool? Like say we only got five hundred thousand or something in a grant for the pool, is the town willing to pick up the rest of the price tag for the pool? I said, I have no idea, that's not something we've ever discussed.
That's something for you guys to decide as a whole when the time comes.
Well, that's, that's what I told them, I said, that's never even come up on our agenda.
You guys as a council will decide how much money you're in love for.
Yeah. And the mega bounce, they said it was a success, there was about two hundred people there, they broke even with it. So they said it was really good. They only had one incident, some lady broke her leg, but they said she, um, she was very good about it. They said she was, they said if anybody that got hurt, it was good that it was hers because she was really good about it and everything and she didn't carry on or whatever. Um, and they're looking, the records looking at a new booking site, it's called Perfect Mind Booking. The one that they have now, it doesn't, it's not very user friendly and people aren't using it because they say it's not, it's not easy to maneuver on it. So with this new one, it's going to be six thousand dollars for a one-time setup fee and then it's six thousand dollars yearly for this. But it books everything, it'll book the CRC, like if somebody wants a wedding in there or whatever, um, it'll book the, uh, the hall over at the rodeo grounds. So it, it'll book everything for the town. And, uh, there was some discussion on the arena schedule. Um, it's pretty much full, there's only about two, two spots left on the schedule to book for the arena for the year, so, or for the season. So they were quite happy about that. And that was about it for it.
What was the name of that program again? Perfect something?
Oh, uh, Perfect Mind Booking, it's called. Yes, the other communities have used it and Bonnie got some feedback from them about it and they say it's really user friendly, um, and they're all quite happy with it. The only drawback is that six thousand dollars, but it's a one-time fee for setup and then it's six thousand dollars a year.
So twelve thousand for the first year and six thereafter?
Yeah, right, yeah, but.
Twenty for the year.
But anyway, they said, the other community that Bonnie and Channing talked to, they said it was well worth it. They said it's a lot better than what we've got now, so. So we'll have to see what's in the budget for it.
And that's for all of, um, the community facilities?
Yes. The only thing is like when you book online, you still have to get confirmation that it's available. And that, but you can book it and then Channing and that will see where it's booked and then they still have to have a verbal confirmation that yes, it's, the CRC would be available that day. I would think so. Oh, and has it, anybody's been in the CRC to see the new renos? Have you? Does it look good?
It, it looks really good. Yeah, I went over to the, um, I was going to kind of talk to Bonnie, on Bonnie's report, when they did the sound lights, or sound and, and projectors and that. And of course, it, you know, they have a few wrinkles that had worked out, but it was really impressive. Looks nice, it's bright, it's, you know, other than, they made the center of the court dark, um, it's kind of a dark brown. Um, I guess for volleyball, it's excellent. There was a question how it's going to work for basketball, because you know, the line, especially if you, when you change the, the court, if you went side course, but it looks really good, that's.
And they have a map that rules them over it.
Yeah, so.
For dances and stuff like that, so it's not written in the floor anymore.
Yeah, they, they wrapped, they rolled it out for the, for the, the schools, um, uh, event that they had, where they had seven hundred people in there. And I guess for chairs, it works excellent, it's, it's just unbelievable. Um, they're not sure about dances yet because you cannot move on it.
Okay.
And, and the second thing is if you spill something on it, it gets underneath it and then when you go to roll that up, how do you drive both sides? So there's questions on the map for, for some functions. So they're, they're trying to work that, but, but I guess for the, for the event that the school put on, it was really impressive because there was no marks. But they're hoping that because they, they stripped the floor right down to nothing and then re-stained it and re-lined it, that, um, it won't, um, scar up as quickly because, um, as they've put more layers of, of material on it, it, it shows the scars that much worse, but it does look impressive, really good. I'm not sure whether they're going to put out the banners back out though.
Did you go into the little gym?
No, I only went in the, in the big one, I didn't go in the little one, yeah, because they did it too, that's right. Yeah, I should have gone over it when I was there, but, um, I was more wanting to see what the sound of lights, uh, the sound of, uh, projectors. Uh, it's, it's really, uh, it's, it's, I think it's more user friendly than the, than the hall, than the IOP hall. But it still, still has a few wrinkles that, you know, if you don't know what you're doing, it's not, it's not as, as idiot proof to just plug it in the wall and then talk. You do, you, but you, the nice thing about, you do have control of, of the volumes and the levels and, and so it's, but there are some functions that they're still going to have to use a multiple thing. But it's, it's, it's really impressive, it looks good, you know, it's nice to see that the, the school board invested the, the dollars into the facility, so. And there is rumors that they're still hoping to do the gaming too, in the parking locker, that's the rumors, I'm not sure. Okay, anything else for George Lee? Okay, moving on to Lyle, nice to meet you.
Okay, I attended the, as Paul said, the NBC meeting in August. I caught the tail end of the, end of your pool party as well. And I attended the Old Man River Regional Services Commission meeting on September fifth. And this meeting was a little different, we did a bus tour and we went down to Raymond, which has become what they believe is Alberta's first net zero community with nine municipal buildings and all their street lights are powered by solar since last fall. And they'll be selling the excess solar power to the electrical grid. Uh, we got to see, we've got solar panels on their golf course, uh, at their, uh, five million dollar football stadium, which is pretty impressive. They have, uh, it looks like covered carports, uh, but what they are, they're solar panels. And so they collect solar from there, but they're interesting panels because not only do they collect the solar from the top, but what reflects off the pavement comes back up and they collect the solar off the bottom as well. And that gets a little, I think they're seeing about thirty percent more.
Collection?
Collection out of there, yeah, thank you. So it, it was really interesting to, to see their, their pool has solar power. It used to be that you could only get, uh, collect the solar for the time that they, like for the pool, say three or four months of the year, but now, uh, the rules have changed and you can collect the power, the solar off there all year round. So it, it was really interesting to see, they've got quite, uh, quite the setup. And it was therapeutic for me because Raymond beat us at the last crowd celebration tour. And it was neat to see what a portion of their funds went to. And they were also talking about, uh, the town looking at electric vehicles to save on gas. So that was, I found that to be really, really interesting, probably one of the more, most interesting meetings I've had so far. And, uh, on a separate note, I was at the Calgary Real Estate Board for Brokers meeting. And because I'm active on the Political Action Committee there, I was approached by one of the members stating that if our Chamber of Commerce wanted money to promote, uh, political forum, the Calgary Real Estate Board would help sponsor that. So I've sent a message off to the, to Cynthia, I haven't heard back from her, but just in case she forgets, I'm just going to send it to you, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions, Lyle?
And did you get to go see the new, um, seniors lodging in Raymond? I think they just opened that this weekend.
Didn't, I didn't get to see that. Their community is very sports oriented, so we got to see a lot of that and everything is just kept in very, very colorful, pristine condition and that's, uh, that's what I'm looking forward to when they finish the entrance into town, both in here that we have that to catch your eye, so. But no, I didn't get to see it.
Okay, move on to council pass.
Um, I also was at the pool closing and all of my meetings start up in the next two weeks. I've had nothing in the last three.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Laura? Okay, Michelle?
Um, it, mine started up early, I guess. So first, on the nineteenth, um, had a victim services meeting. A lot of it was kind of going through with some policy updating procedures as well as, um, looking at two potential new board members, which is incredibly exciting. Um, also going through a draft, every year, victim services is funded by the Solicitor General. So we have to go through and make an application every single year. And there's been a lot of politics in the last year and a lot of, you know, very things up in the air in terms of funding with victim services through Solicitor General as well as the definitions of victims of crime and that sort of thing. So it's definitely a pretty lengthy conversation. So we went for a draft and then also ended up, um, having another meeting a little bit later that we're getting to, to continue because after a few hours, it was like, no, we need to break this up into two, it's a bit too much. And then also on the twentieth, had, um, my elder abuse meeting and Lori heard back that we are actually officially one hundred percent completely a society now, which is super exciting. You know, we're getting kind of all the terms of reference, all our MOUs are, you know, all that good stuff in line because a lot of it, they're going to be working with AHS. Um, we have to make sure they are CP and as well as Rowan House. It's kind of tricky making sure that everybody has the same MOUs and confidentiality agreements and we make sure that we're doing right beyond the groups that, um, we're involved with as well. So, um, that's really exciting. And then on the, oh, and then also, um, kind of looking into some funding, um, possible funding maybe in terms of like collaborating in different grants. And then on the twenty-seventh, I had another elder abuse meeting, which kind of was an emergency one that just came up because. because going forth with trying to apply on collaborative grant with Claire's Home to ideally ask for the salary for a, like right now, they have a program coordinator named Gabrielle, she's a wonderful, Gabrielle Kirk. And she's came out and helped us a ton with ours. And at this point, they're, we're trying to, because basically every year, they have to apply for a grant that isn't recommend, or that isn't guaranteed by any such means, and sometimes it's part-time, sometimes it's not, kind of depending. So working on collaboratively getting, basically using Gabrielle and having her take us in Vulcan County under their territories. Because as of right now, Vulcan County doesn't have quite enough caseloads to warrant our own full-time coordinator. And with anything with the government, especially with healthcare and stuff like that, unfortunately, there's always more needs than there is funding. So trying to sort of creatively think of the box, and in the meantime, also hold, unfortunately, the victim services is incredibly same thing. I mean, she works some pretty crazy hours and does some really phenomenal stuff for us. So unfortunately, we can't really use her as a resource as we were hoping to think. But Nicole does a great job of what she does, so instead, we're trying to figure out some problem solving of that, and then hoping maybe with Claire's Home, ensuring in some agreements with them, to assist us in case management. Which is really important, where the elder abuse case comes up, the case manager is the one who pulls in all the collective, like the required committees or organizations, and sort of gets that team together for each case and then hands it off. So it's a really, really important position within that. So that was that. August twenty-eighth in the morning, I had a victim services meeting, which was going through line by line, our budget and funding application for our final approval of our Solicitor General Grant application. That afternoon was Dr. Hall's service in Amton, and I can't believe the turnout and the amount of lives that he touched in so many different communities. Like the airport hangar at the Balm Museum was just like overflowing. It was a really beautiful service, and a lot of our community turned up, which was really awesome. And then on the evening of that same day, also had another chamber meeting. And that was going through some reelection of executives, which is basically the same board, they just kind of switched positions around a little bit. And going through some housekeeping and stuff like that. August thirtieth, went to the pool lineup party as well. And September fifth, I was asked to be a part of a meeting with Sherry Poole from the County Economic Development Officer, Sarah Noes, and Ursula Sherwood with Community Futures. And I got no jokes, and we talked about a marketing and business tool session planning of a one-day event for Vulcan County. And it's training for local businesses modeled around specific feedback that we got from businesses as to what they need for support to be viable and healthy in the county, as well as what tools or challenges that they face, and go through and get the, what exactly we heard as feedback as to what our businesses are saying that we need and what support we can provide to them. So partnering with these guys will hopefully really bridge that gap. And really, you know, hopefully help a lot of our local businesses, which is a pretty exciting thing in, you know, in my heart, so. And as a quick aside, for a shameless plug, on September twenty-second, we were invited, everybody got the email earlier today, for the Claire's Home Business Conference and Partnership between their chamber and the town of Claire's Home. And Vulcan and Vulcan County has been invited. The agenda looks really awesome, they've got a lot of really good quality speakers and books about coming in. So hopefully, it's a really great success, and if anybody or their, you know, anyone in their networks wish to go, it looks like it could be a really beneficial event. Also, that same weekend is the food truck fundraiser, so apparently we're quite a busy community for it. And also the shameless of, hey, everybody, go out and check that out. And that's it, I promise.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Michelle? Okay, Councilor Ashen?
I had the Marcus Poem at the pool party too, mustn't forget. And I got in trouble because I didn't sit at the table with the councilors, but I didn't even see them. But I did have a good time. The Marcus Foundation on August twenty-seventh, we started out at two o'clock with the policies, we're in Edmonton, so they know that there's nobody from the town on that day. Then we had four o'clock, we had a meeting with the self-contained housing units tenants, which was quite interesting, because we had people from Carman Gate, from Champion. I, I don't know if we had anybody from Lomond or not. I can't remember now, but I think there were twelve or fourteen of them turned up, which I thought was excellent for, and they just voiced any opinions they had, and they all seemed very pleased with what they were, where they were staying. And then we went into our regular meeting at six. And on the twenty-fourth, which will be our next meeting, they're going to do the grand opening of the scooter shed, so it started out as a project that the tenants in Peter Dawson Lodge wanted a covered shed for their scooters. And they fundraised, I believe, maybe, I don't even know how much, quite a bit of the money. And so it is up and running now, and so it's, it's quite a nice looking little building just off to the side. And then on September fourth, I had the Vulcan County Health and Wellness. We went over, or Scott just addressed the payment schedule, and then this Wednesday, on the eleventh, there'll be a celebration barbecue at the hospital on the grounds. And that will be starting, I believe, at twelve. There will be an online auction starting in mid-November for part of the ongoing fundraising. And then I passed out this, talking about Christmas in the summer. And I did think, and you can think about it, but I did think it would be a nice gesture if the town put a table in as councilors, whether we pay for it ourselves, or I don't even know if there's anything in the budget, because I know it's all set in stone. But I do think it would be a, a good gesture for us to go and partake. And the online auction will end that night. And the tables are, well, not, not the table themselves, but the cost is fifty dollars per person, whether you want to pay for it yourself, or if you think we should see if Kim can scrounge up the money, we have to look at that at some point. And the Blue Ribbon Report, which of course has, comes out for every department, has come out, and the one for the health, and it kind of reinforced what we're already doing, and how we're thinking about a change in how we see healthcare, or maybe health wellness. And I think that was it.
How many people to a table?
I don't know, it's eight or ten.
Are the residents noticing a big difference with the scooter shed, and does that include like their winter storage?
Yes, they'll, it'll be their winter storage, and I, I'm not totally sure, but there was some thought that there might be one extra, like one extra scooter for the spaces they have. And they weren't, when I was last talking to them, they weren't sure what they were gonna do there, but, you know, that too can change at any given moment, so. Yeah, it is, it's a lovely little building, so. That was what they took again.
Is the scooter shed great by the smoking?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's an ugly yellow shed.
I thought maybe they were just getting more better smoking sheds.
Yeah, well, someone will probably try it, but.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, it's a nice looking building, the only thing I had was, is the color, I thought it was a little different for, maybe they didn't have a great, a great variety of colors to pick from.
To choose from, I don't know, and they maybe thought that that was a great color, I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, I don't, it's just that.
I don't know about the color.
That was the only comment I have heard that was a negative, was the color of the shed. I, I've heard it's very, I've, I've never been in it personally yet.
It smells lovely, it smelled like brand new wood, so that's always a nice smell.
Maybe so residents can see it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's really, it's good, so, yeah.
And they can go in and out whenever they want, because there's a key cabinet.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Laura? Okay, thank you, Laura. Okay, moving on to me, I guess, I did not make it to the pool closing, I apologize. Thank you a lot for doing the Deputy Mayor's job.
I was the third time Paul did it.
Well, whoever did, thank you very much, I, I forgot that I had a previous planned event that my wife told me I had to go to. So, but anyway, thank you very much, but I heard that it was very positive, so. I did go to the CRC training for the sound and, and video equipment. And like I said, it, it's gonna be very positive for the community, that's for sure. SEWA, we, like Paul had said earlier, we had our board meeting in our facility here on the, in August. So the, I guess the highlight is, is that there was six municipalities submitted eleven sites for potential seating for this facility. And they have now whittled it down to three. We won't know which of the three are until the September meeting, which is September twentieth in Olds. And that's when the engineer will come and release the findings of, of the study. The, we, we had created an executive, I don't know what you'd call it, an executive, but a, a group of two people to sit with the engineers to come up with three potential sites. And so that group is going around to the ones that submitted that were successful in the next couple of years. So in, on our September the twentieth meeting, we will know where the three sites are. I went to, every two weeks, we have a meeting at the hospital for the building committee. It's coming along, if everybody's had an opportunity to see it, they're putting up steel studs right now. They are a little bit behind schedule, but they're hoping to run some good ten-hour days and, and catch up to the schedule and get it all closed in before winter. Unfortunately, once it's closed in, you won't see much of what's going on, but, but it's pretty impressive so far. And like Lauren had said, on Wednesday at noon is the, what did you call it?
Well, the celebration.
Oh, celebration, okay, yeah.
And it's being paid for by the architect and the builders.
Yeah, yeah, so cart builders and, and the architect are paying the funds towards it. I went to Mayor's and Reeves. It was kind of semi-dull, but semi-exciting. It started off very normal, and then one municipality, we had, we had some questions for the MLAs about the MSI funding, you know, whether it's gonna end or whether it's gonna carry on, and of course, you know, they're non-committal, because their budget hasn't come out. But then we had a municipality that wanted to request that we shouldn't be paying the education tax, we shouldn't be collecting the education tax. And unfortunately, the municipality that requested this is a municipality that the residents pay zero, or next to zero in taxation anyway. So that threw a huge burden in the backsides of just whatever was there. And there was a couple very verbal discussions that went on about, you know, taxation. And you know, and to be honest with you, I'm not sure if you guys all know, MSI was created from the premier Stelmac era, when we all whined and complained about collecting education tax. And we said, get out of education tax, leave, you know, that room for the municipalities. Well, they went through a whole gamut of different discussion on that MSI funding, or I mean, about that, about that taxation. And they decided that it was easier to leave it there and give grants in lieu of it. And that's how MSI was started. And originally, it was started on a one-to-one, if we collected six hundred thousand dollars in this municipality, we got six hundred thousand dollars back. And then it just got whittled and whittled and whittled back. Originally, it had no strings attached, now, you know, every group has kind of added strings to it. But anyway, so the discussion at the end really was, is that, you know, be careful what we wish for, because if we get what we want, we might be something like the ambulance system, where it's not exactly what we were, thought it would be, and not exactly how we think. So I think that the general discussion was, is that taxation is one that needs to have a good global look at it in grants, and some sustainability in it, but, but anyway, it did spark some very good discussion on it. It, it really was a good discussion, probably, I don't think, I'm not sure if he didn't expect to hear the backlash of, of some of the municipalities that supply services for their municipality, because they don't supply them in their municipality, but he got it. So anyway, it was, it was good though, it went longer than normal. I was parked in a two-hour parking spot and I got a gift.
From the city lepers?
From the city lepers, when I went to pay it, I said to her, I, she says, what are you here for? And I said, well, I have a gift here, and she says, you're the first person that's ever said that they've got a gift on their windshield. But anyway, I witnessed that, stopped and talked to Tanya, or from, Tanya Thorne. She, she spoke quite a bit on the, on the, I hope everybody got a copy of that report, so you had a chance to go through. She talked quite a bit on it, and that, that Barry, the AUM president, sent out a comment on it too. So hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to read those comments on AUM stand. Kim, I'm not sure if he's gonna talk about this, but the policing one was out earlier that day, and you can go on the, on that portal and, and watch it again if you wanna. You can't sleep, and you feel like getting beaten up, you can go onto that and listen to the two hours of information on the policing. But it, it potentially has a, an effect on all of our municipalities, because we pay zero for policing, and, and the rules pay zero for policing. But then, you know, once you hit five thousand people, then you pay a portion of that policing cost, so. But anyway, other than that, I think that's pretty well it. Somebody's got some questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, somebody wish to move the council verbal reports? Lauren? Any question on launch motion? Hearing none, I will call a question. And it's carried down, thank you. Okay, moving on to administration reports, Mr. Paul, Activity Management Reports.
So you've all had a chance to review it, of course, the outstanding items are, everything that's on there are longstanding that we're currently in the process of working on. Grade out, obviously, we were able to accomplish since the last meeting, it has been quite a while since the meeting, but the ones that are in white, some of them are gonna be still on here for quite some time, so, unless anyone has a question on. That's, that's the progress report since the last meeting.
Okay, no questions, we'll move on to the CDO report.
Very straightforward, you've all had a chance to read it, we, we are spending a good amount of time on our safety program and working WCB, OHNS through that end of things. We, some of the highlights of, we actually hired a safety consultant, so he's been going through, through our documentation and providing us with updated material, which we're reviewing and, and making our own. We got the climate monitoring site lease done, the things with the AD con worth mentioning in here. You guys know all about the email about the change in the original plans to go back to the three, and then redo some of the ditch work. They're hoping, and this is not written in stone, but they're hoping that they'll be able to open up the road on twenty, roughly, on twenty-third. But that depends on material coming, so we don't wanna put anything out there. We did have a conversation of whether we advertised the road closure for that. But the fact that they're detouring people for the paving and that anyway, they're gonna just signage for us, and we're gonna do the barricade on the inside at the service road. and we're going to do the barricade on the inside at the service road. So if people do get to that entrance, they'll still be able to go around service road and exit town. So we're going to do traffic control that way. So hopefully, that will, will go off fairly well. Like I said, they're, they're hoping that we do the twenty-third, but nobody will, because they're dependent on somebody else delivering the materials, nobody will stand up outright and say yes, and it will be closed on the twenty-third.
Just the one day?
Uh, they're not sure. They're, they're hoping they're going to do it as quickly as they can, but if they, to protect their butts, they said it could be as long as five, so. But we're anticipating that it will be a fairly quick process. Soap and cutting, laying in, so at the most, probably two days, we're hoping. Please don't quote me on that, because if it goes longer, you know how we get beat up on that, so.
Well, we won't be here anyway, so.
You close the entrance to town as you guys leave for the AUMA conference? That might not work out for a lot. Just trying to put the phones on hold and.
You know, it's, it's something that we've kind of have talked about that needs, needs to be done. I think we'd look at it like fools if we didn't do this right now.
While it's being done.
While it's being done, so.
So we provided, trying us with the documentation. They started the, getting everything ready for upgrades in there scheduled for November. So that's coming on fairly quickly in the process of what we're doing with OHNS and our safety programs. Stu and I took the opportunity to contact QP and we've rewritten all the job descriptions for the public works guys while there's a change that's going on. And so we've sent them off to the union right now. And really, the, the feedback we got, they, they basically said, if the guys are good with it, we're good with it. And from that conversation, we're probably not going to do anything as far as the agreement, because of course, we have another year on our agreement before we negotiate. So any changes that we'll make, we'll just add to the negotiations at the end of the year, at the end of next year, and making the amendments to the agreement. They were pretty happy with that. Other than that, if there's any other questions, hopefully I get on everything. If there's any other questions?
No.
Just to be picky, it says for the dates July nineteenth through August ninth. Shouldn't that be stressed out a little further?
To September ninth?
That's, uh, actually, I didn't change the date. It should have been from August ninth to September. Yes, I apologize, I will get that changed. That's what happens when you use the same template. One of the first things I was supposed to do is change the date.
That's good, though, I mean, it's a document that we keep, so.
Well, thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, appreciate that.
I'll change that, resubmit it into the agenda.
Anything else? Okay, if not.
I guess, sorry, I should point that out. Tom did mention that I attended that webinar on the proposed police funding. And really, what stemmed it is some conversation about equitable cost sharing. The province eats up two-hundred-and-sixty-three million dollars a year in frontline police services based on the twenty percent of the population that is, that provided policing free of charge, I guess. There is no tax-based recovery. So they're talking with the RMA, the AUMA, that's who they started with, and then they broke it down to this, this webinar public engagement, which is a little disappointing because it was two hours of listening to them. They have very, they look like very fixed formulas that they're using, but then they're asking for people's opinion. But you have to submit it to them via the survey at the end. It's, I've done some preliminary things, please don't quote me for this purpose, pay for purposes, but, you know, I did some quick on, on their cheapest funding model that they threw out, they, they threw out several. Based on our stuff from this year, we committed about forty-seven, somewhere in there, thousand per year. And how, how that affects us, if you look at it for our regular mill rates, that's fairly close to our Marcus Foundation for Senior Housing and what we did fire fully. So kind of puts it in that perspective of where, that's at their cheapest funding model. That was at fifteen percent of, and thirty and seventy of our assessment population. So you guys, I'm sure, have been through the documents. If you really want a good listen, the webinar is available, but they didn't really have any answers. Most disappointing is the very last answer after waiting two hours to hear it. What is the province going to do with the money? Are they going to just, are they doing this just to lower their expenditures? Or are they actually going to increase and talk about policing? And their answer was, we don't know. So it was, it was kind of, to me, it was almost backwards. If you don't have an idea what you're going to do with money, why are you asking for it? But that's just my opinion.
But I think though, too, on that policing one, though, too, to kind of, because it was discussed a little bit at Mayor's and Reeves, too, is that some of the thoughts are, is that they will try and subsidize some of the policing for some of the other areas, so it doesn't come all out of, out of one area or the other, so. And like I was saying earlier, once you hit five thousand one, you have to pay.
You're paying for it anyway.
If you're only four-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-nine, you don't pay a cent. So, and I think that's where everybody's saying, that's not fair. You know, what about us type thing, so. But anyway, like Kim said, it's, it's there, there is a document in that. I didn't open the document originally. When I came, I read the, about the webinar. I didn't go in and open the document until I came in and talked to Kim. And then Kim said, well, open the document, so then I went in and read the document.
That's where my opinion came from, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, but I didn't, I didn't go to the webinar because I had some other commitments on Friday morning before I went to Mayor's and Reeves. But the ones that did go to, or did sit in on it, I think they got the same feeling as a, you know, that's kind of a hunting expedition, but not.
Sure, yeah. I, it, my feeling was, is they're, they're looking at what would be, they're, they're kind of just feeling out everybody to see what would be acceptable. And it's definitely not legislation by any means. I don't think that we're going to see it in this year or next year's budget, but it, it looks like something that they're looking towards.
Okay, anything else for Kim? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the domain officers.
I think Nancy should have to give those reports since she's here.
Yeah, verbally, yeah.
I can't see it.
I can't see it. Do you want to borrow my glasses?
Yeah, we could, we could help you. But anyway, is there any thoughts or comments? I mean, between Nancy's report and Paul's and Lyle's reports on what's been going on, and kind of get a good idea of everything that's going on in Nancy's department and stuff. Anyway, any thoughts on, questions on hers? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the public works. We didn't, have we had any touch wood, I guess, but we haven't had any trees that have gone down and created any major?
No, we haven't had an insurance claim from a tree.
So I, I think that's a good sign. I know that some people ask, you know, when they come through and they cut down a couple of trees and they say, well, why are we doing that? But I think that, you know, by doing this pre, pre and post-analysis of our trees that we have, and, and they kind of find what potentially could be a problem and remove it before it does, so. There's so many questions, why they're cutting down a tree on the Bullard or, you know, somewhere in town. But we can, and hopefully, this will just show that we're trying to keep a bond on people's vehicles.
Well, I think the one Kitty cried, well, just crossed the street from us that fell last summer. And this will be kind of summer limbs, but then they've taken the whole thing down now.
Yeah. We try to save them as long as we can, but then we.
It was pretty.
We also, that's one of the reasons why we bring in the arborists to do, because of course, they need the hazard assessment. If it's, if it's to the point where it's more feasible to put a new tree in than to try to save one, then that's the rule.
Lauren?
In regards to the lift station by the Weetland Hotel, is this something that we might need to move up on the priority list?
We had a conversation about it, yeah, and what that'll look like. Yeah, there was some significant damage. They went to put a clamp on and then just shared the pipe underneath. So we did the repairs that we could. But at this point, Stu's getting prices and some cost estimates of repairs and/or upgrades to the, to the entire thing. So that will most likely come up in capital talks closer to the end of the year. Because we're, right now, it's just a shot in the dark to just, to say what kind of repairs to be done.
That, that is one that, you know, has major implications because, you know, if something happens on the east side of the highway, it affects that lift station substantially. So I think the thoughts were, is, you know, how much do you do? Or do they keep on band-aiding, exactly what you're saying? You know, how long can you band-aid it before you have to bite the bullet in?
The hope, the hope has been long-term that there be a development worthwhile of upgrading the entire thing to a size to handle the capacity of the new development.
But you, you have a good point there, that, you know, I think this is one that's going to be, probably going to see on our list until some, somebody is put in there and they do something to make sure. Any other questions on Stu's? And so there, you know, on the cemetery, you know, Lyle works, there's one opening and one closing. So go back to the budget. I'm waiting for him to put in there, they, they opened one, but they didn't close it, so.
That would just have to be the day he wrote the report. I can gladly say my entire time out there, we closed everyone of them.
Yeah, well, I'm sure they do, but I just.
I closed one late one night, and that was memorable evening.
Okay, anything else, Stu's? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the community services manager.
I thought the wind-up at the pool, for the pool party was excellent. Kids looked like they were having fun, totally covered in bubbles and.
Do they have the bubble machine now?
Yeah, they did it over on the splash, or on the, uh, water park. And, and then opened the gates so that the kids could get covered in bubbles and go in the pool and back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it worked really well. And it also allowed people to, that were there for dinner and, and that to go onto the deck and see the pictures of the old pool and the progression through the years. It was, it was really nice because there was people that probably hadn't been on the pool deck in, you know, twenty years, were able to come and look at pictures and, and the plaques that are on the wall and those sort of things.
I had someone say they couldn't believe they were closing the new pool. It's only forty-two years old.
That person had white hair?
No, she doesn't, actually. I've got a lot more white hair than she does. But she should have.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions on Bonnie's? Okay, moving on to the CPO.
Looks like he is busy in August.
Yeah, really focusing on the, on the school playgrounds. We've had a few calls about that. And then, of course, the normal on-site lease. He's been working with Nancy on a couple of those.
Okay, any questions? Okay, if not, move on to the fire chiefs.
I actually see they got some new members.
Yeah, unfortunately, they, they had three juniors that they lost. I just was talking to one of the members today and, and they lost three of the juniors, but they did pick up two new juniors this week, I believe. So that, that's a very positive. You know, the juniors are the ones that are, are future in everything, whether it's fire department or, you know, golfers, sports of these type. But so it is nice to see that there.
We did have a public works member join, so.
That's what I heard, he used to be, and then he quit, and then he left, so that's good.
Had a Goz radio here.
Yeah. That's nice to see. Any questions or comments on that?
And apparently, the fire department is putting up the tables for the barbecue on Wednesday.
Always a good one, good. Okay, so any comments on any of the fire department? If not, somebody wished to move the administrative people, Lauren? Okay, any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, I'll call a question. And that's carried unanimously. Okay, one more motion. Thank you, Michelle, moves that we adjourn. Any question? Michelle's motion, hearing none, call a question. And it is carried unanimously.
And you made it your way through.
I did make it through.
Pretty sure you forgot my name, but that's okay.
I'm pretty sure you forgot my name, but that's okay.
Did call you, Michelle? Okay, anyway. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you, Nancy, for staying.